Board of Administrative Communications, let's start there. I should know this by heart, should I not? Okay. Um, who do we want to start with? I don't see Sharon. So Tara, you have a-
I, um, I'm just, I think we're doing a good job. The kids are happy with their, they're working with their distance learning. I think the teachers are good about following up. I've noticed that in my personal experience. So I think, I mean, I think that's, I'm impressed with our progress and with the efforts that have been made by our staff and our executive office to make this all happen. Still impressed.
Thank you. Um, Todd?
Hi, nothing for me tonight.
Jeff?
Uh, nothing here, thanks.
Brian?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Jen?
Nope, nothing.
All right, Led?
Yeah, you know, the governor, the governor's task force on reopening, you've got the information about that. And so the subgroup on education is chaired by Commissioner Cardona. The state board meets next week to discuss some items, as well as that is being discussed in all districts, about graduation, summer school, bus contracts, closeout for the fiscal year, and reentry in August. And, um, for the subgroup that Commissioner Cardona is chairing, there's going to be more representation from superintendents, cave, the state board, and all five rest. So more to come on that after the state board meets next week with the commissioner on the next steps.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Sharon, you have anything to share tonight?
No, I don't.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Murray, I'm picking you off as I see you.
I only want to reiterate, as Tara mentioned, our distance learning program is continuing to move forward. We are going to put out a survey tomorrow, um, asking parents for their feedback. We value the feedback. We're looking for information regarding student participation, connections, technology use, and, um, the, the amount of learning that's going on through the distance learning program.
Great. Thank you. Sharon?
Erin, how, how is the survey going out?
So we will have a survey that will be, um, sent to all families that will be from, um, Mr. Curtis and myself, asking them for information, and it's a Google Doc that they'll have available to answer. And we're asking parents to answer it for multiple children because there's different experience, obviously, at the elementary, middle, and high school levels.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, so, um, as I reported a couple of weeks ago, it's, uh, hiring season for school districts around Connecticut. And while we have made the decision to pause our, uh, assistant principal search at the high school, uh, for now, we have, um, continued with, virtual interviewing, which is a new experience for us. Um, and I'm pleased to report that in, uh, less than an hour ago, we actually signed our first teacher. Um, by that means, um, a, um, fabulous candidate that the final interview, um, Miss Beth Hennessy at Central School, Sue Lemke, and I had a chance to hire a terrific special educator who's relocating to the Hartford area from Brookline, Massachusetts Public Schools. Um, and I'm most pleased that another district in, uh, the Hartford area, high performing, had simultaneously offered her a contract. And, uh, it always feels good when you, uh, win one of those. So we got her signed, and we have our, we have our first virtually signed teacher in this brave new world.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lemke?
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to update you that Matt and I continue with our district equity planning in this distance learning world. So we've reached out to the Center for School Change, our partners Carrie Lord and Patrice Nelson, and we'll be having a planning meeting this week, and certainly will be providing the board a bit more of a comprehensive update at our next Board of Ed meeting.
Great. Thank you for keeping up. Uh, Mr. Curtis?
No, I think, I think I'm off, you know, I just say I continue to be very thankful of, you know, our parents' feedback and support, you know, the efforts of our staff and our students, I think, have been tremendous through this experience, so.
Great. Um, agreed. I think everybody's doing so well under such incredibly difficult circumstances, and we appreciate the patience of all our families and the patience of all our teachers, and everybody who's jumped in to do such difficult work so quickly, and staff as well. Um, Mr. Casey, are you sharing with us now, or do you have, or later in the meeting? I wasn't sure.
Uh, later in the meeting, I have a couple of slides.
Okay, terrific. All right, so then we are on to recommended actions. So I need a motion for the approval of the minutes, uh, from February 25th.
So moved on February 25th.
And can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Jeff, that's you, right, Jen? Sorry.
I had to get off mute, sorry.
All right, so Tara's, Tara first, Jen second. Um, any discussion or changes? Hearing none. Uh, vote, uh, can I get a vote on approving the minutes?
Aye.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds like we're all good. Any names?
abstain, Susan Albstain.
That's you, Led, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I can only get four of you on my screen when we start sharing a screen, so. Um, okay, so that's, uh, now I need approval of the minutes of March 12th.
So moved.
Second.
So is that Jeff and Tara?
Sure.
Any changes or discussion on these minutes? Hearing none, uh, can I get a vote to approve the, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yep.
Okay. Any abstentions? We're all good. All right, that carries, and now we have the approval of the April 14th minutes.
So moved.
Actually, so this one, we, uh, we have to make a change to, right, so the, um, found out that, uh, we need to reword one of the, uh, one of the motions for the, for the high school roof specs. So I'm not, I'm not sure technically how to do this. Um, anybody want to help us?
Is that, there's a question, is that, so do we need to redo the motion, or redo the minutes?
We need to-
Because the minutes could be okay, but the motion could be wrong, right?
Yeah, correct. So we need to, I think we need to redo the motion and approve it in the new, in the new vocabulary, new, um, in a new way. And then I think we amend the minutes for the 14th.
It probably had to be done by a certain time, is that correct?
Yeah. I believe, yeah. So what I have is we have to change the verbiage for the, um, what's in the minutes of the April 14th meeting. So I'm going to have Todd read the new words, the new phrasing, and then if we can-
Make a motion and accept the changes, yeah.
Right, so we're going to have Todd read it out, and then we're going to amend the minutes to include those, that wording, if that makes-
Okay.
Yes?
Sure. Okay, I'm going to, uh, move that the Board of Education approve the final plans and project manual dated February 28th, 2020, and the professional cost estimate dated January 27th, 2020, for the Simsbury High School re-roofing project.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
And can we have a vote on that, please?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And now you need to vote to amend the agenda, the, uh, agenda-
Minutes.
Excuse me, the minutes from that meeting to include the new motion.
Okay, I'll move that. Todd?
Second.
Second.
All right, so then can we all, um, can I get, uh-
All those in favor?
All those in favor for amending the minutes for April 14th to reflect the newly worded motion on the high school roof project, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Hard part's done.
Now, do we still need a motion to approve the minutes of April 14th as amended?
That was what we just said.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so now we are on to Mr. Sullivan and the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers.
Yep, so this is, um, uh, just one, uh, item for action tonight that, um, is a statutory requirement. Um, in, in this case, this particular teacher has been a part-time, uh, French teacher with us for the last couple of years. The board may recall that we had some motions about a, a different teacher in the department who, um, needed to take a leave of absence last year. So during that period of the other teacher's leave of absence, this teacher went to full-time, took on those extra classes to pick up for the colleague that could not, um, come, come to work, and now is returning to part-time work. So Lynn Lipkin is the teacher that we're talking about. I met personally with Lynn to, um, explain all of this even before we were in the current school closure mode, um, and she understood what was happening. So she will remain a .6 teacher with us, but will no longer be full-time. So this is kind of a procedural motion to return her to part-time status.
Let me- Make a motion that we, we have, but we have to make a motion that we, um, the non-renewal effective June 30th, 2020.
Yeah, I, I can, you're making the motion?
Yeah, Sharon, there's a question.
Neil, you said, Neil, you said .6, and it says .4?
So she will remain, um, .6.
Okay.
What we're, what we're removing is .4.
.4, okay.
To full-time this year from .6.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Okay, so Tara has made a motion. I need a second, please?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Neil, it's the first time there's been one person. Isn't usually a few people?
Uh, we were able to, um, with the retirements that we did have, there was nobody else that needed to be non-renewed this year, so we're quite happy about that. We, there are many districts that will non-renew almost all their non-tenured teachers, just, um, in case, but, um, our budget planning has allowed us to keep this down to just one this year, um, and we're quite happy about that. Um, and, you know, otherwise, there can be a lot of collateral damage when you, um, end up non-renewing a, a lot of your teachers.
No, it's great. It, it's been good for morale, for sure.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Um, so now we're on to approval of the Passion Scholarship.
So tonight I have, uh, two scholarships for your consideration. Both of these scholarships have been reviewed by the high school principals, Steve Patrina and Jane Ellen, our Director of Guidance, along with central office administrators. So the first one is the Pursuit of Passion Scholarship, and this has been presented on behalf of the men and women in the greater Farmington Valley who have been playing morning basketball at Simsbury High School. And the group wanted to recognize Steve Patrina, who's been so instrumental in organizing morning basketball over the past 25 years. Uh, Steve has brought together people of different ages, race, sex, social economic status, skill, et cetera, all through a common bond, a love and passion for the game of basketball. So this scholarship is intended for a student who has pursued his or own path, his or her own passion, and demonstrated the ability to bring people together for a common good. So one scholarship in the amount of $500 to $1,000 will be awarded to a graduating senior in the class of 2020, and it's for a student who's gone above and beyond in pursuit of their passion, preferably given a sports-related passion, a student who displays a sense of community, camaraderie, and collaboration, and a student who's a leader who's demonstrated the ability to bring people together. Um, we also would like to acknowledge a student that's exhibited a positive attitude even in the face of adversity. So this would be a check that would be presented directly to the recipient, um, by Josh, Tim, or Dan Patrick. However, that evening will look a little bit different, different virtually this year. So I would ask the board, um, in favor of this particular scholarship, Pursuit of Passion Scholarship.
That's wonderful. Uh, could I please get a motion to approve this scholarship?
I'll enthusiastically improve that motion, move that motion. What a great, great thing to be supporting. It's a kid with passion. Those are the ones that are the best. So wonderful to give them a place.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Yes, uh, much thanks to all the basketball players at the high school early in the morning. We, the support of Steve and his passion, and this is a really great way to pay tribute to somebody who cares so much about that high school and the kids. So, um, can we, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, terrific.
All right.
The second, the second-
Oh, I'm sorry.
When there's a, I, I don't remember seeing, like, when there's one scholarship and there's a range in the amount, right, how is this determined where, where it is in the range?
So I, I don't have an exact answer for you at this point right now. Um, that is different. We don't typically see a range such as that, but I do think it has, um, a, a, a consideration to the amounts of money that is being donated by the folks that have contributed to this.
Makes sense. Okay, thanks.
All right. The second scholarship that has gone through the same review, this is the Simsbury Community Band Scholarship. Tim Crane, who is the president of that, of the Simsbury Community Band, collectively, they've established, um, the scholarship. The Simsbury Community Band was founded in 1973, and it has had a close working relationship with the music departments, both at Henry James Memorial School and Simsbury High School. And this scholarship was established in the spirit of furthering that collaboration. So it will be one scholarship in the amount of $350 that will be awarded to a graduating senior each year, starting with this class of 2020, uh, looking for candidates who have demonstrated excellent musicianship and leadership, and have a desire to continue in his or her musical education, either for a professional career or for personal satisfaction. So a check will be presented directly to the recipient by a represent, representative from the Simsbury Community Band. So I would ask the board to consider this scholarship, the Simsbury Community Band Scholarship.
So Erin, did I hear you, this, this one's going to be an ongoing scholarship?
Correct.
Okay, great. Well, that's wonderful. Um, can I get a motion, please?
I'm moved that the Board of Education approved the Simsbury Community Band Scholarship to be distributed or dispersed in 2020.
Is that so? Great. All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much to the community band, that's terrific. And now we're moving on to adoption of healthy food and beverage?
Yes, and look at the size of that motion.
Do we have to read this one?
Yes, so as you'll recall, this is our annual, it's really the, uh, certification of compliance uh, with the state of Connecticut, uh, for Public Act 0663, which is an act concerning healthy food and beverages in schools. So, in essence, um, compliance with this act makes us eligible for a pretty substantial grant funding, which helps to supplement our food service operation, which you are aware is, um, a self-sustaining operation. So, um, with the projected sales from this year, we'll be eligible for about $20,000, uh, in grant funding, which is about half of the overall grant funding we do get, uh, for this program. There's a few other, um, grants that support our food service, operations. So there are three separate, um, motions of varying parts of the compliance, and they do need to be, um, read into the record. You'll remember a few years ago, I think we tried to modify that and had to come back and, uh, do it again. So we want to, want to try to, uh, avoid that. So I appreciate your patience with this, and we need some good volunteers to take on, uh, reading these slides.
All right, I'll move. Move that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-215F, the Simsbury Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdictions and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2021. This certificate, this certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school store, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organization groups.
Ooh. I need a second, please?
Second.
All right. Uh, all those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that's one.
Oh my God, they're getting worse, huh?
Do you want to do it? Anybody need a drink of water? You want to do it?
I'll do it.
I'll do it, okay. There's one after this, Sharon, you can have the next one.
Move that pursuant to sections 10-215F of this CGS, the Simsbury, Simsbury Board of Education hereby will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut National Nutrition Standards, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interest class debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Well done.
Do I have a second?
Title second.
Okay, and, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, round three. Sharon, you're up.
Yep. Move that Simsbury Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in section 10-221G or Q?
Q.
Of the CGS, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just the regular, regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the school, the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Okay. Can I get a second on this one?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now on to Information Reports, Facilities Master Plan. Mr. Kendall?
Hey, uh, how's everybody doing?
I just want to-
Upside.
No, that's okay. I, I just want to welcome Jeff, our friend Jeff from TechTone is in on our meeting tonight, and he'll be available, uh, for questions once we get, um, through the presentation. So, with that, I hand it to Jeff to kind of tee it up in, uh, as the Chair of the Facilities Enrollment Task Force.
All right, I appreciate that, Matt. And again, thanks for Jeff for being here. Just, again, just want to quickly frame it for everybody. Um, you know, we haven't talked about this for a while, for obvious reasons. But I, I, first of all, I just want to thank everybody for the hard work on this. This has been a really big lift from everything, from the, everybody from the front office to the public, to the, my, my esteemed colleagues here on the board. This has been a big lift, and it's been a lot of work, and I just want to express my gratitude for everybody, uh, that, that's been involved. Um, you know, the, the, I guess we are very close to, to, to finishing this, you know, the Board of Ed's work on this. Again, as a reminder, the Board of Finance came to us with this project request to look at the facilities and enrollment over a, a lot, and create a long-range plan. Well, we are, I think we're, we're very close to being at the end, so I, again, highly encourage, uh, this board to, you know, come forward with the recommendation. Now, I obviously, I, I don't, I don't want to be tone deaf to the time we're in, right? Um, I, you know, so, you know, we can, we can discuss a matter of when we, we do this, but I think it's incumbent on this board to come up with a recommendation about how we want these, the facilities to look in the next, you know, 15, 20, 30 years, um, in reaction to what's going on with our enrollment. Because in really, whatever happens, I think we all would agree that, you know, the immediate need is at Latimer Lane, and we do need to come up with a recommendation to address that issue. So with that, that, Matt, I don't know if you want me to kick it back to you, or Jeff, or how, who's up?
I, I think we can go over to Neil. He has a stack to work through that, um, will pick us up where we left things off after the public hearing, just kind of as a, a refresher, and as you can see on the slides, to talk through, uh, some next steps potentially. Go ahead, Neil.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, um, Jeff, and, um, I'm, I'm actually really excited. Normally, my presentations for the board come after some fabulous teaching and learning presentation by Erin Murray, so I'm quite happy to follow the healthy food and beverage motions tonight.
Got the primo slot tonight, Neil.
Yeah. So, um, as, as you can see, um, we, we are, uh, just going to run you through a couple of slides talking about the public forum. Um, it seems like a million years ago, but it was just March 4th that we had so much momentum on this project, um, where, um, in February, we had been to all five elementary schools doing, um, really well-attended neighborhood meetings to discuss this project. Had a great turnout for the March 4th public forum, and, um, we're, we're, uh, you're, you're all in possession of a flyer that Jeff Wazinski from TechTone, um, created for us. Katie Wild and I helped to, um, tweak that document a little bit. We really see that as a document for how we can communicate out to our, um, other boards and, and to the public. So I want to talk about what happened at that public forum, although I know most of you were there, so we can go quickly. Um, discuss the feedback we got from that group, um, and just remind this board what the two current options are, and talk about what we see as the next steps that we can take, um, in, in May and June. So, um, in, in looking at, uh, our March 4th public forum, you'll recall that, um, we, uh, informed the public that we, uh, based on a number of factors, including the survey reactions that we had got, were ruling out a 5-6 school based on the recommendations from the- ruling out a 5-6 school based on the recommendations from the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force as an option, and we're also really rejecting the notice, the notion of a status quo approach, which is really what our capital improvement plan had been for quite some time involving maintenance projects. At that March 4th meeting, we also did review feedback from the neighborhood meetings, five of them that were exceptional, and really, after we had gotten by the situation where so much of the focus had been on Tindall down the road closure of Terrifield School, we really got to a much better focus on the educational aspect of looking at sixth grade in particular, and whether its placement in upper elementary or a middle school was more appropriate. A big portion of that was reviewing the staff and community survey that we had put out there. Obviously, the results of that survey, you will recall, indicated a very strong feeling from professional staff that a sixth-grade model in, at the middle school was something that should be considered. I would call the community feedback on that a little more mixed, although it was still a pos, on the, on the more than 50% side of people saying that they could support sixth grade at the middle school. The other part of this that's not on the slide, you'll recall that both Aaron Murray and Scott Baker presented about the sixth grade nationally, about the research about sixth grade. They shared some comparisons at the state. I think even surprising for me, realizing how much of a minority we're in, as, I mean, just not very many other districts have a K6 structure anymore, and that, that kind of comparison across our Dergan state even surprised me, and then obviously locally looking at the question with the survey. So, to just remind everybody where we are with the options. The two that are left, what was this one proposing that the sixth grade moved to Henry James with the addition of a sixth-grade wing and deal with the significant needs of Latimer Lane through a renovate-as-new concept? While it's not on the slide, we've seen it many times before, I'll remind the board that these projects coupled together, cost estimate is about $66 million with after-state reimbursement costs to the town would be a little over $49 million. That's with the two projects coupled together. As Jeff said, not wanting to be tone deaf to the significant economic downturn, there, it's not to say that we couldn't uncouple these projects if that's something that the boards wanted to talk about down the road. So, that's, that's the option where sixth grade would join a middle school model. The other option is to leave sixth grade in our current K6 structure, and we came to note this option as elementary renewal, and it would start, it would, it would need to start with Latimer Lane, given, given the significant outdating of that building. Again, costs are not on this particular presentation. Overall cost, about $45 million for a K6 renovation of Latimer Lane, with the cost to the town being a little over $31 million in this scenario. So, those, those are the two options. We really see this when Mr. Tindall talked about we're being near the end. We really see this as, the question that is left is where does sixth grade belong? And kind of want to talk to the board about what more information you need to be able to make a good decision about that. So, a little bit more about the forum and what feedback we received from there. Certainly, we had members of the public saying that this really had to become about the, you know, stop making it about architecture and start talking about what it is, what's the best experience for students, based on input from the experts. It's, it's, I'll talk in a moment about one of the things we did. Aaron Murray and I have had the chance to have some terrific discussions, albeit virtual, with every sixth-grade teacher in Simsbury, and want to be able to share that down the road here. Certainly, as has happened throughout this process, people are concerned about what would happen with any kind of redistricting, and we heard that at the forum. A few members of the public got up and talked about research from different publications about sixth grade and whether it belongs in the middle school or not. You can find pro and con materials to that question, and we certainly have found some on both sides of the fence. And then, there was, I think, some people who, upon seeing the price tags on some of the options, didn't understand that the options we were presenting were costs for a best first step, and that, as you all know, our plan actually involves sort of a 20-year arc over what the town needs to do to address the needs of the elementary schools. And then, last slide on this front, there was a couple of parents who felt like, no matter when you transition, whether that's from fifth to sixth grade, or you keep the current model and transition from sixth to seventh grade, that the district could do more to pay attention to the challenges of that transition. There were a number of comments, probably specifically from the Latimer Lane and Squadron Line folks, about the need to do something in the near term, that the, that maybe other people in town don't understand the significance of the conditions that need to be addressed. And I know we were able to have the board do a tour of Latimer Lane in our last in-person meeting to try to make that point about the need for addressing these, you know, worn facilities, if you will. And feedback, too, that the notion of adding preschool as to more of our schools was, was received positively. So, to talk about where I think we should go, and that's what we want to hear from the board tonight, it's talking about our next steps. So, the, the recommendation that we're making tonight is, we actually think that the next logical group to kind of get together is, is actually the Curriculum Committee, and schedule that in the next couple of weeks, and allow Aaron and I to share some of the feedback that we had received from all of the sixth-grade teachers. I would say the vast majority of those teachers spoke positively about including sixth grade in a middle school model, and we can tell you more about why, why the majority of them thought that. So, that's something we would like to schedule in the next couple of weeks, and then also take the flyer that was produced and use that as a way to update both the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and, and I would add the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force, that really moved much of this work, but hasn't met since late February at this point, due, due to the current crisis. And then, as, once the Board of Ed has made its choice of what the best first step is, we've certainly talked about modeling kind of the debt structure with the Board of Finance, and that being something that clearly probably looks differently as municipalities all across Connecticut and the country face different economic circumstances than they had even a couple of months ago. So, with that, with that said, I think I will stop and see if either Jeff Tindall or Jeff Wazinski want to add anything to that set of comments.
No, I appreciate it. Neil, this is Jeff Tindall, obviously. I do appreciate the great summary, and also, like you said, I don't want to lose sight of Facilities and Enrollment, right? They've done a lot of the heavy lifting on this project, and obviously, because of circumstances completely out of our control, we, you know, they have, like you said, they haven't met since before the public meetings, I just want to make sure we close the loop with them as well, so I appreciate that. And I, I really think at some point, I, that we need to, as a board, take a look at that, that issue of transition that you mentioned. We, that, that came through loud and clear. Regardless of what happens with this issue, that, that seemed to be a big issue for a lot of families, and I really, really encourage us to continue to look at that.
Yeah, this is Jeff Wazinski. No, I think Neil summarized it quite well, and I think where you're headed with the additional feedback from the sixth-grade teachers in the curriculum is really what I think the community asks for in a bit more detail, so I think, I think that's the right next step.
So, I think what Matt and I wanted to hear from other board members is, you know, ultimately, whether it's this spring or perhaps in the early fall, it's, it's for this board, making a decision about what the best first step is, and it's, it's really boiled down to what more information do you need to be able to make your best informed decision about the sixth-grade model and where it should be? And is there anything else we should be doing to give you the information we need, you need?
Correct. So, I'd love to hear from, excluding Jeff Tindall, Sharon, myself, who are on Facilities and Enrollment, what you all might need to feel better versed in the subject and maybe able to move this forward. We've done so much hard work this year and spent so much time with Jeff Wazinski, our honorary board member there, and bringing everybody along with us. I, I don't want to lose sight of this because Latimer Lane is not okay. We have issues to solve there, and I think it's important that we remember that, you know, we, we spent a good bit of the town's money on doing this study and its work. We don't want to leave unfinished.
Sue, can we go back to the full screen of people so we can see everybody when they're talking? Is there more?
There we go.
Thank you.
Can we just acknowledge, too, Jeff's background? The best of all of us today.
I can tell he's got the technology piece down. All right. So, anybody chime in with questions or thoughts?
I guess I'll start with a question. The, I'm gonna, despite this being, you know, curriculum questions, and I'm, I'm back on the operational side for a second. Is this, are there operational efficiencies by moving all the sixth grade into, into Henry James? Do you need to have more staff, the same staff, less staff? I, is it just moving people around as well as the students? I don't know that I get a sense for that, that part of it.
This is Matt. That's something we can come back with some more detail on for sure. Todd, there are some efficiencies in your staffing model when you bring that entire grade level under one roof. I'd estimate probably two to three full-time equivalent teachers. There would be conversations we would have to have on, do you need more administrative support or the same administrative support? But there are not super significant cost savings in personnel, that's for sure, but some efficiencies.
Right. And then, I guess I'm, I don't know how, and I guess I'll leave it to the, the first round of the Curriculum Committee going through this. When you've got evidence on both sides, I don't know how, how you decide. And since a lot of other schools have had this in place for a long time, I guess it's kind of hard to, to go back and say, well, what did you, what made you decide to do it? Because it might have been a completely different environment back then for some of those, and I'm not sure that the same reasons would hold now.
I have some to ask. I, I liked, Todd, on the curriculum part, I don't, I know you said, Neil, that you can find both sides of the fence, but like, what do, I have a background in finance, not education, and so what do our specialists recommend, or what is that ever going to, you know, come forward, or, you know, how? I think that's a huge piece as to why, why we would move them, and I don't know if I fully understand.
Yeah, I think that's what, so our, our way of drilling down to that expertise was that Aaron and I held five different meetings with the sixth-grade groups from each of our five elementary schools, and again, the vast majority of them saw the sixth grade as more appropriately placed at the middle school than, for a variety of reasons, and, but, but largely, there's academic reasons, but there's, there's also really sort of social-emotional reasons to, you know, kind of a feeling that by the time they get to sixth grade, they outgrown the elementary model and wanting a different experience for those kids. So, we had sixth-grade teachers who said, "I am fully in support of this, and I will be the first teacher to sign up to move to the middle school if that's the decision." And then you have other people who believe in the model going to sixth grade, but will say, probably for me personally, I'm, I'm attached to my elementary school, and I want to remain at the elementary level in some capacity. So, we want to, we want to be able to share the feedback of our sixth-grade teachers, particularly with the Curriculum Committee, and I would want to see what else Aaron might want to add to that.
So, I do think, Neil, that's, that really does give an overview. We wanted to talk with teachers, obviously, to find out what they think about the educational benefits, the developmental needs of students of this age, social-emotional supports. You know, as, as Neil said, the opportunities, the resources that are available educationally as teachers looked at it, said the opportunities to collaborate with all sixth-grade teachers in one location was a real extra perk in regard to how they pull curriculum together, learning opportunities for students. Transition was a key question, and everybody agreed transition would either have to occur after fifth grade or as it does after sixth grade, but we do have to pay closer attention to that as well. So, we have some good information, we're pulling that together, and I think the next time we come together, we can talk, after we have that meeting, we can talk further in more detail regarding those pieces, but certainly want to give an educational viewpoint in regard to the, the benefits and drawbacks, and there's both, whether you keep sixth grade at the elementary or move them to the middle school, but we would like to be able to present that educational thinking behind it.
And if I could just say, Jen, just as a reminder, you know, the survey results from the faculty and staff were in favor of moving that sixth grade to the middle school.
Yeah, I was, I was just honestly was looking more about what Aaron thinks about it, and, you know, as someone who's, like, the teachers are obviously critical to it, but Aaron's position will be the same either way, so I'm just more curious as to what you were.
So, so the question I have is, so the ask of us tonight is, is what, whether or not we should go for? Whether or not we should go forward with the sixth grade, or, because there seems to be still some outstanding, like, the curriculum work and understanding that transition piece is still critical to that, whether or not, and not knowing what that's gonna look like?
No, 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 I think you're right. I think the asking, and Neil and Matt and Erin, keep me honest here, is really kind of the questions you're asking, Sharon, is, you know, what more would you like to see? What do you need? You know, where do we, you know, where do we go to make everybody comfortable to make the most informed decision they possibly can?
So for me, I would say better understanding of that transition plan. And I would also say, you know, there were some questions around the movement of the teachers, and I understand, you know, economy is a scale, we bring them all to one building, we can utilize, you know, them differently, but I think the transition for me would be top of mind.
I have one more question for Matt, really. Do you, like, no one could have expected this. So yes, we've spent a ton of money studying and doing all of that and having these meetings, I agree, but no one could expect what we are in and are still dealing with. Like, and obviously, the education is the first priority, but financially, you know, will we even have, will we even be able to move forward with either of these? And it's not just a redistricting, like, do we, do we have any insight into that?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a great question. That's the new normal we're kind of entering into and trying to figure out. I'll go back in the meeting I had with Neil and Jeff from Techton, and that is, you know, based on the financial fallout, which we'll have to analyze and we'll have to have conversations with the Board of Finance about, we may or may not be able to move forward in the time we had hoped to, but the importance of the long-term plan is still there. We still need to define a long-term plan and know that the direction we're gonna be headed. So we won't know, Jen, until we know a little bit more information about what the economy looks like, the duration of this school cancellation, stimulus packages, relief packages, and a whole lot of factors we weren't thinking about a month ago. But I don't think it takes away the importance that we need to define what our first best step is, and then need to have a collective conversation with the Board of Finance about what are their thoughts moving forward. And it may be delayed, you know, that could be a possibility, but as everybody on the board talked about, I think the heavy lifting and the work about the model doesn't need to change. You know, we may be forced in the end to look at a little bit more maintenance in the short term, or look at redistrict in the short term because of the economy, but we need to define our plan and the direction we're going to move forward in.
Thanks, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, totally. Yeah.
I would just, I would just add that, you know, that our need doesn't go away because of the financial issues we're all facing. And so, you know, we just need to work with the Board of Finance, but we need a plan in place. That, you know, we're still getting increased enrollment as of, you know, now, and we're still looking at a very crowded school system at the elementary level, so we have to make some decisions one way or another.
But I would also say, though, that, I agree with what you just said, Sue, but I think, I think it's still critical that we have that understanding, not let the, I guess I want to make sure that we're careful about not letting a date drive us rather than us having a full understanding of the impact, you know?
Right, and I don't mean to say that a date is driving us, I'm just looking at when we hit Latimer. To me, that's the date.
Well, right.
That's what's driving us, is when do we run out of room at Latimer and we have to make a move.
So should the plan be that, I mean, should it be a two-pronged plan? Because, I mean, we've had that conversation about interim at Latimer, like, if all was well and we didn't have COVID right now and we were going about our normal plan, what would we do about Latimer right now?
I think we'd be moving our master plan forward in concert with Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, like we had been planning all year, try to figure out what our next step is. So I think as a Board of Ed, we still need to figure out our first step, and then we need to, then we need to work with the other two boards and understand how we can make that happen. And it's flexibility and it's collaboration among the boards, but the need doesn't change.
And I think the other thing to consider, and maybe it's more important now in light of the new context, is, as Neil kicked off, there's a big price differential between the two options. And I would ask, are there, is there more information you want in light of that analysis as we move this forward ahead, and how the cost of one versus the other plays into maybe us defining what the first step is? Because certainly they both, as Susan said, include Latimer as the priority.
And speaking strictly for myself, I don't want, you know, I understand that cost plays a huge factor, but we've spent a lot of time talking about, let's not let the architecture define our next step, let's look at what's best for the kids educationally. So I don't want to get trapped into staying K6 because that's what's affordable if we really don't think best place for kids.
And I agree with you, I was just, I simply, I'm just going back to, I just don't want to seem like we're not sensitive to what is going on in the greater town and in the state and in the country. And so, all I'm saying is I definitely think we should be moving forward and having a plan, but it's, it's just, you know, side note in the whispers, we might need a Plan B if this is gonna take three years or five years or 10 years to get started versus, you know, the one or two years or whatever we were hoping for.
Yeah, I actually think, I actually think we're on the same page there. I do think we're on the same page. The need is there, that Latimer Lane School is, by and large, it's still the same school I went to maybe 40 years ago, you know? It is bursting at the seams that we need to look, so that's why I said at the outset, it may be a question, we can talk about the when, right? But I think, I think this actually proves why we need the long-range planning. And again, just as a reminder, even if we came up with a recommendation today, those shovels aren't in the ground for 18 months, you know, and, you know, again, the world could change again on us in 18 months, so. But again, I really actually think we're all on the same page on that one, sorry.
All right, so I have a housekeeping issue. We're losing our live stream TV about now. We have one more agenda item, and I'm not sure, it's the update on the Henry James plan. I'd like to continue, I don't know if we are being recorded and people would be able to play back the remainder of the meeting, or do we need to push this to our next meeting, which I'd rather not do? But I'm not sure of the way this works right now.
Susan, you will not be recorded.
Oh, we will not?
No.
Okay.
I thought we were going to eight, I thought, I didn't realize it was.
Now, planning again at 7:30 tonight.
SCTV is cutting us off.
My suggestion, Susan, is to postpone this till the next meeting because you do want the next agenda item to be recorded, to be live, which is optics for the community and for the board itself. And that has that as planned next time.
Can we start earlier?
Yeah, are we gonna be at the seven o'clock, I mean, 7:30 for the next few meetings?
Is that when they're gonna pull our plug, so to speak?
SCTV is trying to figure out how to record two meetings at the same time, but that has not yet been resolved, so I can't tell you for sure. But I do have to cut off your streaming now, so I don't know if you want to table the next item and adjourn?